Okay, we'll call a meeting to order. It is 6:30 and Dana, you will be reporting.
Okay.
So, I'm a little worried about the agenda before we start. We have one regular application, the application by the FISCs to revise the plan that we approved a while back. And so we'll take that up first and then what I'd like to do is run through the draft revision language and see if there are any remaining issues and if we can come to agreement on what that package looks like so that we can get it sent to the select board in some form or another. And then we have several sets of minutes to do as well, several maybe five, but. So, let's begin with the FISC application. And in the email that I sent out this past weekend, I mentioned again the section in the ordinance that's relevant to our conversation tonight, and that's revisions to approved plans. It's on page 24 in the ordinance, if you want to refer to it. And I'd like to approach this application in with two different votes. I think first of all, after we hear about the application and what we're dealing with, I'd like to hear from planning board members and take a vote on the procedural approach that we're going to take and see if we can come to agreement on that. Either we can treat this as a minor revision, and the standard for that is laid out in the ordinance. If it doesn't qualify under that language in H, the other option is to treat it as a new application, and if that was the case, it would go through the regular process. We'll complete this determination, adhere, and so forth. So, again, let's hear about the proposal and then we can talk about the procedural approach.
Thank you. My name is Joe Stolow. This is Fox Crane. We're from Make, Search &amp; Design Studio. We are here this evening representing Kelly and Steve Fisk, who own the property on 156 towards Shore Road. We were in front of you several months ago to talk about proposed changes to this property that you would make and went through that process with the board successfully. So, what I'd like to do is just quickly run through for you what the current existing conditions are, brief description of the proposed changes that we had shown you previously, and then the changes that we're proposing to make to that application are, we think, are very slight. So, I'll look at those as well, and of course, happy to answer questions during or after that. Should be fairly quick. So, this existing structure is just, it's really a series of structures that march downhill towards the water, start with a deck that's very close to the water and then begin to step up all the way up. There's eight different levels that get to the garage that's close to the street. So, originally, we were tasked with the idea of trying to consolidate spaces to make, but they're all on different levels. We're trying to get everything on as few levels as possible, consolidate the living area, and at the same time, improve the structure as it relates to the shore requirements. As I said, there are a bunch of, there are a number of structures that are within 25 feet and 50 feet of water, so we're trying to improve that. It's part of the shoreline zone rules. So, we presented to the board when we were here previously the design where we had removed almost all the structure within 50 feet of the water, and we allocated that space further back and attached it to the building. At that point, when we were going through the process, the planning board determined we had met the greatest practical extent of requirement that's in the shoreline zone and improved our plan to for that reallocation of space. The, when I say almost all the structure was behind 50 feet, there was one corner that was on, I believe it's the western side, northwestern side of the house where there was existing foundation, and we felt like it would be less efficient to remove that little bit. It was over the 50-foot setback by two feet, so we felt that it would be less efficient to remove that and force us to build a new foundation and to keep that foundation in place at that time. So, we asked the board if it would be okay if we could leave just that little corner that was just inside the 50-foot setback, and everything else would be behind it, and we're at that point, we re-approved our plan. So, since that time that we were here in front of the board, we investigated, we had structural engineer at the site, we investigated the foundation a little further, and realized that the foundation that is under that piece that was just over the 50-foot line is not in great shape and probably would have to be removed. So, with that in mind, what we didn't want to do was get into construction and then come back to the board and maybe hold the construction while we figured out whether or not we were going to put a new foundation in places where we thought it was going to be just over the 50-foot line or if we should do something different. So, we made the decision that because that foundation is going to be removed, we're proposing we'll take that line of the new wall and push it back so it is fully behind the 50-foot setback. So, if you can see your 11-by-17 drawing here that we presented, what you see, all we did, it's the same drawing here, we're just focused on this area. It's the only part of our application that is changing is that, is the front wall. When I say front, I mean the waterside wall of the house that it's supposed to be. So, the, you'll see in our plan, this line is the line of now the newly proposed front wall of the, of the house. You'll see the 50-foot setback line peels through here and comes around this way. So, the wall is fully behind, now fully behind that 50-foot setback. So, that's an improvement from where we were previously where that, this front one here was over that 50-foot line. You can see this first heavy dashed line that sits just in front of that front wall, that's where our wall was previously. So, this little bit was hanging out inside that 50-foot setback line. So, that's one way we can improve. The second way we improve it is this lower heavy dashed line is where the deck was extended to previously, and we moved that back a bit as well. So, both the house and the deck are more compliant with the shoreline zone than it was previously. So, we've eliminated approximately 46 square feet also from the house in doing this. So, in that sense, we're improving our, not just improving the project, improving our application, we feel, from where it was previously. So, we've moved the house so that it can be compliant with 50-foot setback, we've moved the deck back, and we've reduced the square footage of the project. That, those are the only changes that we've proposed here. Aside from, we also, in this scheme, have eliminated the interior stair. So, there's, if there was any question about the basement space underneath here being used as part of the living space, the only way to access that space below that space now is to go underneath. So, it's really just confused from the cannibal storage space underneath. So, those are the only changes that we've made to this application. Happy to answer any questions if anyone has, anything is unclear, questions about previous application, and any of the changes that were proposed.
Is there any, any new section of foundation or wall or foundation? How are you addressing that? If the old foundation is going to be removed, is it, is it replaced in time and means the same, same length and height, or what's happening with that?
So, the existing foundation will be removed. The reason with the foundation, we think the foundation is not rich, it's really for two reasons. The condition of the concrete that's in that area is falling. It doesn't look good from the inside. It's got some hand-sprayed insulation across it, and it feels like it's not in any good shape. The other concern that the engineer had was that it's not, maybe your practice does not go below frost. So, when we remove the existing foundation, the new foundation will be standard footing, conventional foundation wall that comes up above grade, goes down to at least below frost level, and it will be a conventional foundation wall.
And so, its size and location and so forth, it's not different from what was initially proposed?
It is different in that it will be set back. This, this heavy line is where that existing foundation exists, where we're exist now. The new foundation will be back behind that 50-foot setback line. So, yes, it will be in a different position, but it will be in a position that improves the, improves the performance of the project as opposed to mixing course.
So, in terms of earth disturbance, it would be greater earth disturbance now with this project, I would assume?
There might be slighter, a slight amount of increased earth disturbance. Even with the existing foundation there, we still have to get in and make sure there's a perimeter drain. They still have to get around and move the roof, so there's going to be some excavators on the side of them to do that. So, in order to get down and dig, there's probably a little bit of earth disturbance to, to put a new footing foundation in.
And John, can I ask?
Please.
Well, there are also, in our previous approach plan, there were some new concrete walls. We weren't using the entire old foundation of the apartment. So, there's.
Even in that area, which is pretty much right around here, this was all existing. This area was all renovated. So, there was, there wasn't even a foundation wall that was getting in that area.
You'd already had the Sillpax proposal forward, and so there's really two other proposed changes in terms of earth.
No.
No. Sorry. So, why, why remove the internal stairs? Just for space reasons?
It was. So, what happened was when we removed the internal stair, we were able to then put, we were able to approve the bathroom, we were able to put laundry facilities upstairs. We felt as though, we had concerns about the basement space anyway for headroom because there's ledge down there. So, if we took out the stair, if we capture that space as usable, more usable space on the main level than downstairs. And it was, we felt.
So, this is accessible from the upstairs?
It is. So, there's a basement plan that has a door on this side underneath the balcony that accesses that space underneath. So, again, what that does allows us, there's ledge over there, it has less of an impact as opposed to that stair coming down. We're not quite sure where it's going to land in respect to the ledge. So, they almost use this storage and get.
More curious, honestly, Chris.
Yeah.
Hi, John. Other questions?
Paul, do you have a definition of minor modification anywhere in the old new law?
If you, if you look at that section, Article 6, Section 3H.
Right.
It talks about a revision involving only, only minor modifications of the plan, and those, you know, the scope of what a minor modification is, I believe, is intended to be captured in that 1A through F.
Oh, I thought, I read, I thought that applied to every new app, every revision, but.
Yeah, so if you go to 2, it says if the revision involves only minor modifications.
Right.
Yeah.
But, okay. It seems like we have a fair enough discretion to determine what's a minor modification.
Yeah, and typically, the way that's been viewed is, you know, it says the procedure for a new application shall be followed if the revision involves, and there's a list there. And so, if it's minor and it doesn't involve any of those things, I mean, if it's deemed to be minor and it doesn't involve any of those A through F issues, typically, it's been found to be a minor revision.
Are there any other changes to the, like, the usable space in this area? I'm just looking at the other, the older application.
Aside from the stair, we basically shortened the length of the living dining space and the screen porch.
Would it be fair to say sort of the footprint of the building is being reduced some by somewhat?
It is, yeah.
Whereas the interior, the living space, the floor area is remaining the same. Is that what your situation is?
No, we are reducing by pulling that front wall back. There were no other footprint changes from our original, that's the only footprint change from our original application. So, we're losing 46 square feet of footprint in living area.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, the interior, by removing the stairway, you're gaining some, some usable area inside.
Yes, yeah.
I'm not criticizing.
Oh, no, no, yeah. So, so we did, we did gain that stairway state, space back.
And the thinking there was that the basement was only going to be used for laundry, since it couldn't be a livable space? And I thought, how inconvenient, why not just use that floor as a stairwell?
Did you, did you move the wall back to improve the probability that we would approve the plan? Like, if we've got to take the wall down, let's try to be more compliant. Because if you were to have the choice, would you have just left it?
Well, I think we would like more space rather than less space.
Yeah.
I think the concern was that, having done this a few different times, if, when the bill was out there and then determining that the foundation is not, existing foundation is not viable.
Yeah.
And if we go to take it down, and the code officer comes out and says, wait a second, that's not the plan that we approved, then we're in the muddle while we just process it, while guys are out there with the backhoe waiting. So, this, us presenting this to you was kind of preemptive, that we have a feeling that this is what's going to happen, and we want to make sure that, that everybody's clear on what the conditions are and what our plans are so that when the bill comes out to do it, everybody's like, yeah, that's, that's what we talked about, that's what we.
I'm just curious, would it probably be a tough one? If they had come and just said, we're going to replace the wall and not give back that additional two feet, would we have had an issue with that?
Well, you know, I think part of our conversation, well, with this one and with, you know, a lot of other applications, is we start looking at that issue of meeting the setbacks to the greatest practical extent.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, part of our conversation was that we were reluctant to say, oh, there's this existing, you know, basement foundation wall.
Yeah.
And we're going to make you tear that down so that you can achieve the 50 feet. And ultimately, we decided not to do that. We didn't think that was reasonable. So, we let them keep it. But now that it's going to go anyway, I think that the argument is a little bit different.
Okay.
And it's easier to achieve, you know, what, what the required setback is.
I think to answer your question, if, if the plan all along was to remove that foundation wall, who would have come to you at the initial presentation with the idea of removing that back? Because we know that that 50-foot line is a sensitive line, and so we want to try to, especially only being a couple of feet away from it, ten inches away from it, we felt like it was achievable without, sorry, without making the design.
Yeah, to be honest, we actually felt like it wanted to be a little smaller. That space was starting to feel a little too big, and there's budget, you know, considerations and.
Any other questions?
It seems like it, you know, just that section more, it's, it looks like it would really be considered sort of a major slash new application. Certain criteria doesn't appear to meet those criteria, so therefore, it would be a minor, in my opinion, anyway, minor modification, which allows us to potentially address a dispute rather than go much further. I don't have any further questions. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Personally, I'm inclined to agree that the revision seems minor. And it does achieve what we said it's going to achieve, and we'll actually need that setback now. Anyone else have thoughts on that? Is there agreement around that issue or?
Yeah, there's a reference in the, in the references drafted. It does mention one of the, in one of the descriptions of revision impact, I think that's what we're looking at here. Even though, from an engineering perspective, this is not a, a minor revision, but in terms of the impact for us, it is. It makes the house less non-compliant, the resulting house less non-compliant. And so, I have no problem with treating it as a minor modification.
Is there any disagreement with that? Or a conflict?
Minor condition, speaking as code officer, not a member of the board, seeing as there's going to be more disturbance, I moved away just using a erosion control curb to using erosion control mulch, which is suggested at a two-foot height. You could agree to a three-foot height, that would greatly improve the possible negative runoff steam over there, isolate, put that as a condition.
So, I would first take a motion concerning the procedural approach. If the agreement is to address this as a minor revision of an approved plan or not. So, a motion.
Make a motion to consider the FISC application for modification. As a minor modification to the previously approved plan in accordance with Article 6, section 3, H, no H. H1, all right?
And 2.
H1 and 2. Second.
All right, motion and second discussion. All those in favor? John? Okay.
Aye.
If there are no additional substantive questions about the application, we are ready for a motion on it.
Look that we approved the applications for a minor modification, subject to a condition that, in addition to the suspense that a erosion control term installed below the stair area.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
You guys wait for the minutes a few. I've got nothing else to do.
Nope.
So, the Land Use Ordinance and the other ordinances that were, were in, those changes have to be submitted to Eric so he can bring them to the select board. The outside date for that was the absolute drop dead date, the end of next week. So, I certainly would like to try to get it through there by the end of this week and beginning of next week, next Friday.
Thank you.
So, what I'd like to do is, is just go through this piece by piece. I think most of these issues are pretty well settled. We've had a fair bit of discussion about most of them. There were a few comments from the town attorney, and I didn't circulate those because there weren't very many of them, number one. They were, they were quite minor. And I've got them marked here, and I can, I can tell you what those were. And there are a few other revisions, assorted revisions, that I think we should consider. And so, why don't we begin with the Land Use Ordinance revisions, first of all? And I don't know if everyone has a hard copy or if you've got that on your iPads or... Just going through it piece by piece. There really was nothing from the town attorney, surprisingly, on the subsequent changes in statutes and rules space. She didn't have anything to say about that, so.
So, curious, when that was discussed, did you raise that it had been a concern in the past, or did you just?
Yeah.
Maybe she'd forget that it was?
Yeah, I did, I did raise it. But, you know, I don't feel, I don't feel strongly about it. It's, you know, Jack and I had talked about it, and it was something that, you know, he was hoping we could include, and I don't feel strongly about it in one direction and another. I think that if it causes some kind of a problem, it'll get challenged. So, you know, the worst that will happen. There weren't any comments on the permit status on sale or lease of properties, and I think we talked that through. If anyone has any remaining issues or comments or questions or anything, as I run through these, please, you know, bring them up. Again, the town attorney had no comments on any of this. There were the couple of changes updating the erosion and the stormwater standards. I pulled those directly from state documents, so I don't think there's much there that's controversial. That brings us to the table of uses. And Brandon Ethan mentioned the issue of the Shoreland Residential and eliminating the, the option of putting multifamily dwellings in Shoreland Residential. And so, I know that's something you wanted to talk about again. So, just by way of background, what happened here was that there is a piece on page 50 having to do with affordable housing development and dwelling unit density bonus. And that was a piece that was tied directly to the Affordable Housing Law, and we had talked about that when we made all of those affordable housing revisions. F1 on page 50, when we first drafted this, F1 stopped, it was a single sentence, and it stopped after or subsequent revisions of the plan. It was a single sentence and it stopped after or subsequent revisions of the plan. So it allowed the opportunity for the density bonus under a couple of different circumstances, one of which was if the development was going to be located in a designated future growth area. When the, when DECD, the Department of Economic and Community Development reviewed the changes we've made, since they are at the authority on that piece of legislation, one of the comments that they provided through Eric was that they felt that we needed to, because our ordinance allows the development of multi-unit housing in a number of different zones that, and not just those zones that are future growth areas, that we needed to add that in language about, or the development being served by a public special district, et cetera. So in order to make it compliant with state statute, that language needed to be added and that's why it's in there. It's, you know, not likely to happen in Reef Field. We don't have public water. We don't have public sewer. And it's highly unlikely that any other centrally managed system is going to happen. But that's the reason it's there is for compliance with that statutory language. And in doing that, you know, when I inserted that, it made me start thinking about, because she had said the other thing we could do was make adjustments in our table of uses and, you know, change the districts in which that kind of housing might be allowed. And it just got me thinking about the fact that we allow currently multifamily dwellings in the Shoreland Residential District. If someone was to propose affordable housing and take advantage of that density bonus, that would be further intensifying the use in the Shoreland Residential District. And conceptually, that just didn't seem a good idea to me. But I agree with Brandon's perspective that it's not, you know, it's affordable housing isn't likely to happen in that zone at all. And as I understand it, you should explain this Brandon, but as I understand it from you, your concern is generally that we would be eliminating the opportunity for any multi-unit housing in the Shoreland Residential.
And I understand that we don't want the reason, but the density bonus, but it's not a designated growth area. Which has to be, and there's no way you can put affordable housing in Shoreland. It's just not going to ever happen anywhere.
What is that? Sorry, no, wait. What is, what is the language that was added? This is a public special district. Does that mean public special district or special district? I asked about that. Sorry, I wasn't here, but does that be compared with the term of art? Bingo.
A public comma, special district or other centrally managed water system.
I mean, special district, I'm concerned that that could be too interpretable. This is the point in state statute.
It may be in state statute. I, I do not know. But I don't know the, maybe you know Chip, the, the structure of the water system in Reef Field.
Yeah.
Would, would that be a special district?
I was worried about that. We do have a special district that we brought about when we had the leak in, you know, town. And we have the town of Winthrop running that special water district, trucks over there. But it only services, I think, five houses, five areas. My concern would also be that you have Metanoma where they have a community septic and a community water system, which could be interpreted as a, you know, public water system, I think in some way. So I think it's really important you guys nail this one down because there are these special districts around and a lot of land around where they could, you know, effect. Metanoma is basically condominiums. It is. You own the gas.
Yeah.
Really can save. Hypothetically. Maybe it should be an option. If somebody had the power of money they want to spend.
The other thing that I was thinking about with regard to the Shoreland Residential District is that if you look at the definition, it's, it's only 250 feet back from the water body. And you can't build any less than 100. So essentially what it leaves you in terms of the development area is 150 feet. So it's pretty narrow at the end, right?
But can you hypothetically, can you extend that zone? So if we, if we say you can't do it in that zone, if somebody decides to do it in the woods, extend that zone to half a mile from water.
The other thing that I think is more common is that there's a different zone behind it. I mean, there's Shoreland Residential and then I'm not sure what's on the ground, but I, I I think that what you would find is that there is likely a less restrictive zone behind most of those.
Can we make, can that concern that at some point we'll either decide, well, if we extend that zone, there's that many less places that we could in that section, it has to be 250 feet of. So stay long. Or can it be bigger? We can make it smaller. We can make it wider. That's what I'm, so if you eliminate that you can't do this in this zone, then we decide if we make that zone bigger, there's that many more places if we can't do that.
Yeah, but that's, that's true across the board. I mean, you know, with any, with any of this. So, you know, the, the reason that I suggested doing it was theoretical. I, I don't know that there's, I think there's going to be affordable housing.
I understand that.
I agree. I think this is a theoretical concern. Very likely to ever occur in the shoreline. So I do have a question about this language that we were told we had to put in regarding affordable housing generally, the density requirement. I understand that our public special, a public special sewer district. I know what that is, but it says or other comparable sewer system. That seems a little vague to me. Are we talking that the other comparable could be a private system? The developer could put in, I mean, I guess it would be up to the code enforcement officer that said it was comparable to a public special district. I don't know. Again, that's probably theoretical also. It's probably not going to happen.
It happened in Connecticut where you don't have a lot of, like here, public water systems, but they are able to put in their own community water and septic systems to allow for denser housing. What about, well, probably like over in Metanoma, they don't share a well. They check big well, etc. But it's dual.
It means drinking water rules are strange. It's not strange, but they're very, you know, if they call it about public water system is not defined as like, you know, logically.
Yeah, it could be a lot of other things.
It could be a lot of other things.
Thank you.
Ship is implying.
You know, if it serves a restaurant, it's a public water system.
Right. If it's a well that serves a couple of homes, that's a public water system in the definition of statute.
But I think the purpose here, I, I think what they were, I don't know this. I didn't, you know, I wasn't involved in the affordable housing stuff on the state level. But my sense, just from what I've read, is that what they were looking to do was to ensure that if this new affordable housing is going in, that it was absolutely certain that there was sufficient and adequate water and sewer associated with that affordable house.
Which makes sense. Yeah.
And, you know, there were several different ways you could come at that. So what's your pleasure?
I'd leave it alone. But did we have to put it in?
The, the language, the language has to go in. What doesn't have to happen is the change in the table of uses.
What's the current proposed change?
In the table of uses.
Yes.
On page 41 under multifamily dwelling. The current area. So multifamily dwelling currently is planning board approval under Shoreland Residential. And the proposed change is to not allow multifamily dwellings in the Shoreland Residential.
And you're saying that's not fair. You're saying, but it would be on that purpose. You would say don't change it.
I would say don't change it.
Yeah, I would agree with Brandon. There may be all sorts of multifamily dwellings that have nothing to do with affordable housing that we have no reason particularly to prohibit outright.
Others? Thoughts?
I would leave it. Just by words.
John or?
Me.
Yeah, it sounds all right to me.
All right.
I mean, we're going to review it because it's going to come to the planning board that comes up.
Yeah.
So, but that's at least giving people the opportunity to make it possible rather than.
Okay, we'll take that one out.
Do you think Chip? Always being reviewed by the board. I'm only believe, believe though, that it was a major coup, major yay for the DEP. When this first came out, the way it was written, multifamily housing can go anywhere. But they came around, you know, because there was a pushback. And the DEP said, no, Shoreland's sacred. We can't do that. So they made it more restrictive in the town's favor because we can already make it more restrictive as a town. So maybe, I think they gave a bonus to the town to now see that.
Do we know what our neighboring communities are that say that?
I don't.
They're just.
I mean, it's been that way for
Right.
years. And I don't know that we've ever had a proposal for a multifamily dwelling. I, I don't.
I agree. It's kind of.
So the other, let's see. In infrastructure, the table of uses, there's no page number on my hard copy, but the first piece is essential services. And there is a there's a footnote associated with Shoreland Residential Resource Protection and Stream Protection for essential services. And that is because under the changes in the telecommunications ordinance, small cell facilities are permitted by a code enforcement officer. So that, that footnote is about footnote 16. So that's in addition to the table. Page 52, that takes us to the mobile home piece. We talked about that a couple of different times. I don't know if there's anything further on that, Brandon. Yeah, one of our conversations had been about whether or not to leave temporary use of mobile homes. And we agreed that that should be kept. Page 61, stormwater runoff. This was an issue that this section was a point of discussion with an Metanoma application. And I think it was quite confusing. And so the language that I had proposed to correct that is what you see in, in the draft. And we did talk about that at previous meetings. But there was a lot of redundancy and a bit of confusion here. And so I eliminated a piece of that and simply referred that to the side review standards on the other piece.
That made it a lot clearer.
Yeah, it's good.
And Chip had a couple of minor language changes and seasonal conversions. Kristen did have one. It was a really minor comment about that language, but I think she misinterpreted, so I didn't include it in my copy. Her comment, because it, it, it made no sense. It was opposite what I think the language is trying to do. So I didn't. And then the CID piece here. Kristen had two really minor suggested changes. And I don't think the world would end if we didn't incorporate them, but I'll tell you.
I read it off the screen, but I didn't. I'm not sure.
So on page 123, number nine. So, and this one is kind of a problem. I think her language, I think the language is problematic here, but I'll tell you what she said. And now I can figure out what to do with it. So you had inserted, on my copy, it's, it's red, but it's about two-thirds of the way through paragraph nine. Except that the special town meeting need not be held, et cetera.
That was the Eric Dyer.
So what Kristen said was, except that the special town meeting may not be held. And that's quite different than need not. I mean, it's a different, a different meaning. But need not is, you know, is permissive and may not is directed.
So this is, the rest of the set still says may not be held. What, within 60 days?
Within 60 days, yeah. I mean, we could say something like, except that the special town meeting is not required to be held.
It's not same as need not, no?
I, I think, I think the meaning is, is, yeah.
What one would need not?
Well, the only reason I mentioned was because the town attorney didn't like it.
Attorney. So, guys, they love your words.
I mean, I don't think there's an ambiguity problem.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't know.
All right. So let's just leave it. Let's leave it because I, I don't think we can put her word in because it changes the meaning. You may not is very different.
By the way, there's something, this is really trivial, but I realized at this afternoon.
Re-zoning is, in our, in this page, in one section, it's re-dash zoning and the other one, it's re-z. The way we drafted it is rezoning without a dash.
Yeah.
We should be consistent.
Yeah, where, where is the one with the?
The old language, the top of, first line of article nine, first line of paragraph nine there, has re-dash zoning. It's the old language. That's the old.
Oh, I see it, okay. Yeah, why don't we fix that? And then the only other thing she had was, again, it's a language thing, down in thirteen. Second line. Inserted was except for projects subject to the town of Ridgefield Solar Ordinance. Then it said, then will be subject to full site review. She has eliminated then will be subject and inserted shall then, shall then be submitted for.
That's fine. Give her one. Still, the purpose of then, it was to make sure the sequence was understood by everybody, that's all. So her proposal does it the same, does that too.
And. Then her only other comment was in the definitions, our definition of essential services on page one thirty-four. We have included small cell facilities there because we're now counting those as essential services. And she had said that we need a definition, but we have one in the telecommunications ordinance. So there is a definition, all right?
I noticed this made me caught subsequent, in the last meeting, which I wasn't present at. The definition of mobile home, when we changed that line to a little bit, it created, there's a typo in the February twenty-first draft. There's a lack of space.
Okay, where, where is that?
Unfortunately, I can't read this slide. It was clarified. Page one thirty-seven.
Is that the end, vehicles are not mobile homes? The park model recreational? Oh, I see it. And two pages. Yeah. Yeah, I think there's gonna be some. Cleaning up. Yeah, a fair bit of cleaning up and formatting to do that.
That's just. Wouldn't, wouldn't, we're gonna say. Aren't all recreational vehicles? We had a long discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
Never mind.
Yeah, that's a sentiment that he messed up.
It's okay, I, I defer to the great brain power of the board.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's one more Kristen comment. It's about that issue. It's on page one forty-one.
Calling up specific recreational vehicles, not all recreational.
So. In the middle of the definition of recreational vehicle, after the first sentence, which ends with camper, travel trailer, tent trailer, or motorhome. Period. She inserts there, perk model recreational vehicles in parentheses. Designed for long-term use on a site are not mobile homes. And, you know, we kind of said that in the other piece, but she would suggest and say it here too.
Crystal. They really add many things you could live in here. It's like a mini house.
Page one sixty-one, this is a standard condition language. And I'd made modifications in two locations, one in number ten and the other in eighteen. And. In eighteen, I realized that I had included some language that I didn't include in ten. And for consistency's sake, it probably should be there. So in number ten. The last sentence. It says, of the property that is the subject of this approval assumes all rights and obligations granted by the permit. And I would suggest inserting here, including all standard and special conditions of the approval. Because that language shows up in number eighteen, just to make them the same. And then Peter, you had raised the issue in number eighteen. If you want to put that out on the table, I, I agree, yeah.
I have to go back to the demo I wrote, the email I wrote weeks ago. But the, the word permanent shouldn't be there. Nothing's really permanent, it's. Let's see if I can find what I wrote. February twenty-first.
Be, be permanent, and.
And so it would, it would just say land use permits approved for subdivisions shall run with the land. And the shall be permanent, and would come out.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. Shall be permanent.
Yeah, and that, that was, that was Peter's point.
Yeah.
Lawyer language.
I guess they were trying to overdraft originally, but it rested right. But that's, you know.
You know, plus, plus there might be circumstances where they're not permanent. I mean. You know, if that, if that.
There was also back up by those that change. Rather than saying effects of how this charge is.
Minimize, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's, yes, yeah. And that, that is in the draft, yeah. Okay, is everybody comfortable with the removing the permanent language? No objections to that? So I think that's it, in the end, well. But there's more. Wait, there's more?
Do you want to go on one time or you want to?
I, I, I think as a package would probably be a better idea. So. Let's see. Does anyone have anything further on the language that Jack did around the noise standard? We had talked about that as well. It just includes references to the state noise standard and the site location law. It's gonna be extremely rare, if ever, that we have that situation, that there's a project with overlapping jurisdiction from noise. I don't even know of any site location projects in Newfield. Might be some old ones, but. Anyway, that's what that does, is bring the state standard and the town, town standard together so that there isn't. There isn't confusion about that, if we have that situation. And. Kristen had no comments on that. There were no comments on the sludge ordinance language. And we had talked about this, but all I did there was to include in our sludge ordinance. Language, word for word, from the state statute. Which I won't. No problem. But it, it.
You write that for memory.
So what it does essentially is just, it carries over the language about land application of certain sludges being protected because of the PFAS issue. And there are some exceptions, and it carries over the exception language. Solar ordinance, the only thing that we did with that was in the table, the infrastructure table. Is to switch the solar energy system, small accessory scale, ground mounted, to CEO review instead of planning board review. To make it consistent with roof mount.
I believe. I don't know if anyone saw this news item, like Chuck, I don't know why I'm chuckling. A member of the House, US House of Representatives, has filed a bill to create a federal mandate that there be. Visual buffering and all solar arrays, also.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
It was pointed out that, you know, this, Palin has already dealt with this. And he said nothing against solar per se, but he just thought it was terrible. It's terrible, anyone should be able to have to look at it and write. So anyway, that's.
Well, it's not going anywhere.
One never knows. Do that for oil wells too, and. I'm waiting for the buffering per telephone poles.
You gotta put a lot of the underground.
So the last piece is the telecommunications tower ordinance. And I, I looked through this again this week, and I found a few things that I really think need to be fixed. So I wanted to mention, I would see if you all agree with me. One thing I found was that. This ordinance now regulates two different things, telecommunications towers and small cell facilities. And those things are different. Definitionally, they're different. But it was still rather jumbled in the, in the ordinance. And so I have a couple of specific language fixes that hopefully clears that up a little bit. So on the first page, the first thing I would suggest, this is just a consistency thing, and I think Jack just missed it. But in Article three, those are, it's one through six. And the formatting is uppercase letters, not numbers. So I, I'm just suggesting that the one through six be replaced with a B C, et cetera, just for consistency purposes. In Article four, the last sentence. And this is Jack's chain. I talked to him a bit about these things the other day because he's been here tonight, and he's good with this. It currently reads, including but not limited, it talks about telecommunications facilities, including but not limited to small cell facilities. That's problematic because by definition, telecommunications facilities are, do not include small cell facilities. So I would suggest getting rid of including but not limited to, and just say, and small cell facilities, that keeps them independent.
Yeah.
G, the definition of small cell facility. This is, this is very minor, but. Scratch, there's antenna, and the second line says antenna, I get rid of that. That E.
It's a, not the plural here, it shouldn't be the plural.
No. And. I was looking for opportunities in the language to clarify certain things. One of those was the definition. And the other had to do with how these things are regulated. I'm not usually a fan of putting language about how things are regulated in definitions, but there's already some of that in here. And we can take it all out. Or alternatively, we're gonna leave any of that in. I would suggest saying the definition of small cell facility, that small cell facilities are permitted as essential services in that definition. In H, this is the definition of telecommunications facility. It says, shall mean a facility that transmits, transmits, et cetera. And I, what I, I, I thought we needed to do was figure out a way to exclude small cell facilities. Because this definition doesn't exclude them currently. So I would suggest putting, shall mean a wireless facility. Other than a small cell facility that transmits, receives, et cetera. So again, segregating telecommunications from small cell.
I wouldn't necessarily have the requirements to that because we already got the definition there about the telecommunications. You could just say. You know. You could exclude small cell facility. You got that defined. So you just say excluding the small cells.
Okay.
Me, me, shall mean a facility excluding small cell facility.
Okay, yeah, no, that's, that's good. Only because I didn't have the time to do it today. I left threshold height pretty much the way it is. But what I wanted to do in that piece was to pull out most of the language about how that's used in the regulatory context. And put that down in Article six, which is level of review and permits required. I could, I could still do that. And it could, like I said, you know, definitions, I mean, typically, that's not a good place to put requirements. They, they should be in a separate section, and that section is Article six in this ordinance. So, you know, we could do one of two things. I just, I just didn't have time to finish doing this this afternoon, so I could give you language. When we vote on this, it could be with the understanding that, you know. I can pull that language and put it in Article six, or we can just leave it the way it is. If you'd rather vote on the language the way it stands currently.
We completed that four.
And I, I think that a lot of the language is already in six, but it's not all there. And so it was kind of, it was kind of messy. But if, you know, if everybody's comfortable with that, I can, I can take that and reshape it and pull it down into one for six.
It is their broadest term.
What's that?
It's there, it's there in six of the broadest term, but.
Right, right, yeah.
But if.
Right, some of the, some of the detail is up in, is up in five. And the other thing that I was, you know, that I did mark up and was looking to do in number six. And you might have some thoughts on, on this. When I read this, Article six has got an A, B, and a C. A is about all residential telecommunications facilities above the threshold height. B is non-residential telecommunications facilities. And then C is all residential. And then C is all residential, all residential telecommunications facilities below the threshold height and small cell facilities. It was really confusing. I was looking to combine A and B. I mean, there's no reason they need to be separate because the standard is the same. So talk about in A, all residential and non-residential telecommunications facilities above the threshold height require planning board approval. And then B is, is all residential and non-residential below the threshold height and small cell facilities require CEO review. There's really only two things going on here is what requires planning board review and what requires CEO review. So it seemed like it would be clearer if it was just in two paragraphs.
Well, how specific are we going to have to get in the motion? Would we go approve everything else regarding the cell tower ordinance to give you the directive? Or can we just give you a lot of?
Yeah. Well, you know, one, one thing we could do is use a single motion to approve all the rest of it. And then use another motion to approve the telecommunications ordinance subject to these changes that we're talking about.
I recommend that.
Yeah.
Get all mixed up.
My question was the word residential and not residential, does that even need?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I couldn't, Jack was away today and I had that question as well.
Because it's not in the definition.
It's, it's nowhere else in the ordinance.
But, but it's the same thing if you just say all telecommunications.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think you're right. I don't think it changed.
So I would propose just, it's confusing when you say residential and non-residential. If it's really commercial, it was the rest of what he talks about.
Yeah.
So I would just say all.
All of them, because the only, the only, the only difference really is threshold height above a lot.
All it is is the height.
Right.
So, so it's not, it's not triggered by.
Yeah. Well, that would solve it, getting rid of residential and non-residential.
So then you've got everything above needs this?
Yeah. Yeah. And then the only, the only other thing I had here was that in Article seven, I had some lingering concern in reading this all over again, that it wasn't crystal clear when site review picked it. Talks about planning board review, but it felt to me like there needed to be some reference to the site review process. And so in seven A, what I would suggest is in the last, last line where it says, review by the code enforcement officer or by the planning board under the site review provisions of the refill land use ordinance. Just to make sure that there is that reference to site review because it just wasn't, it wasn't clear to me and I don't think it would be clear if someone else. It does talk about planning board review, but.
Sure.
And then Jack, when I talked to him on the phone yesterday, he was suggesting adding to B. Says the planning board shall schedule a public hearing within 30 days of determining that the application is complete. He was suggesting adding unless otherwise agreed by the parties. And that's language that was used elsewhere in another section. So I tentatively inserted.
Communications towers, do I recall that that 30 day mandate is an FCC?
Yeah, yeah. And, and, you know, I started, I started making some changes in this because I was thinking, my first thought was, why shouldn't this process be the same process we have in the land use ordinance? It would make things a lot cleaner. And then Jack reminded me that there are specific FCC requirements that cause some of these numbers to be different. So I just left it alone. I, I didn't start picking them apart because it was too much work. So. Let's see. Oh, I'm sorry. There's one more thing that I found that I did. Article eight. This talks about zoning districts, performance standards and dimensional requirements. When I looked at that first piece in the zoning districts, it says in the rural or CID zone, telecommunications facilities above the threshold height shall be permitted, et cetera. When I look at the table of uses, it's not just those zones. There, it's allowable in other zones, not just these. And I, so what I, I think the fix is, is to take out that specific language about the zones and simply put in a reference to the table of uses because that's where that is. And say something like a telecommunications facility above the threshold height shall be permitted when it conforms, conforms to the performance standards and dimensional requirements, et cetera. And then this, this would be new and is located in a land use district where telecommunications facilities are allowed in accordance with Article seven, table one of the refill land use. And that kind of sweeps in all of that zoning stuff without specifically, you know, listing it in this ordinance. Yeah. Finally. Two little, two little Kristen things in eight B. Second line says a permit is obtained. And I, I agree with her on this. She scratched obtained and put required. And there's an N missing in ordinance. And. That's it. So anyone else, anything about this piece? Yeah, like I could spend another week on.
It's out of the place.
I remember months ago, Jack asked me to look at his first draft and, and my feeling looking at it was that gee, it'd be better off started from scratch almost.
Yeah, it is one of those.
So many things wrong with it. In terms of meaning or.
Yeah.
But anyway. I think this is as good as we're gonna get.
I mean, you know, it's one we could come back to and swing up again at some point, but at least it'll, it'll be better than it is.
How often does it come up? Is it important a lot?
No. No, it's a sleeping ordinance.
We're talking on page 12, which is Article, on the same ordinance, Article nine Q. It says acquisition of all required performance guarantees conditioned. Who chose that one?
Jack.
Acquisition. Acquisition by whom to? Which quote? Obviously, obviously it's implied here, town is receiving. Straight forward.
Yeah, I, I think it's. It's a need to acquire performance. Is there a word that you would prefer?
This is great. Where's John?
I mean, Jack did most of this stuff as you, as you know, we went over it before. So acquisition, we finished with a D. Is there a word you want in there?
No, I just.
All right. So we should, we should vote as a board on whether everyone is comfortable with the proposed changes made in the ordinances and vote to send those to the select board for their review. And as we just discussed, we can do that in two parts. We can do separately the land use ordinance, land use, solar, sludge, noise in one vote and then do the towers and small cells separately. So I would take a motion on the proposed revisions to the four ordinances and sending those to the select board.
Want to try it?
Sure.
All right. So I move that we accept the proposed revisions as discussed for the land use ordinance, the noise ordinance, solar ordinance, the sludge ordinance, and submit the revised ordinances to the select board for their review.
Second, is there discussion? All right. All those in favor? John?
Aye.
And then the telecommunications ordinance, the same thing, except that we have the discussion about several revisions that I can do in the next couple of days. And I don't know how most comfortable wording that, that motion, but. Whoever wants to do it, you're up.
I make a motion to for us to approve the revised.
Telecommunications tower and small cell facility ordinance.
Ordinance. As presented and discussed this evening and allow the planning board chair to finalize the edits in accordance with discussions as reported this evening. And submit those revisions to a select board for consideration.
This is it. Discussion. Almost there.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. So the only thing remaining is five sets of minutes. But there you see it.
Okay.
They are.
Ten minutes or less.
You're the time keeper.
Peter, stay quiet.
So I, I know that there was one step that Jack had one comment on and he sent that directly to you.
Yes.
Yeah. And I think his comment was that the men at Toma people had not participated in one of the L U O workshops. So I forget which meeting, but you have.
And I did our direct, oh, yeah, that was just because I use the same template every time.
Nine minutes.
Do you want to start with the 21st and the February 4th set? It's from the longer ones because it was the first two workshops that we have.
So you're suggesting starting with those?
That double set, just because that's also, I believe, the oldest set.
There's one 28. Did we keep those already?
No, those came back. In the between these.
All right. Well, let's, let's start with the two Angelica just. Those are from one 21 and two four. She combined those into a single set of minutes because they were both L U O workshop minutes. And if you don't have those, she had sent those on, on the sixth of February.
One 21 and two four.
One 21 and two four.
Workshop eight minutes.
And I had on the, on the two four minutes, I had a change. There in the third bullet, second line. We should change, it talks about currently in the draft, it says footprint and height versus floor area and volume. And it should be floor area and height versus footprint and volume. They just were switched, it's all.
Oh, I see. Okay. So floor area goes with height.
Right. Right. And then in the third line, it's a similar change. So you would change where it says footprint and height suits the town best. I would change that to floor area and height. Requirements should be retained. Okay. Anybody else from those? One 21 and two four. Okay. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of January, of the meetings held on January 21 and February 4.
Which you proposed change?
With the, with the proposed change.
Discussion. All those in favor? John?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. So let's go to one 28 and those were in a one third meal from. 128, and those were in a 130 mail from Angelica, if you're looking for it.
Angelica, I don't remember, I wrote to you about the January 28 minutes. I see one little thing in my notes. After the, the paragraph after it says Paulo opens the public hearing, in the first line below that, Frank Bereni summarized the application, provided responses to the board. I would think we should insert there the two, two words regarding issues, regarding issues that remain from the previous or something like that.
Yeah, that makes sense. Also, in the first paragraph, there is a reference to the discussion about the sign and it talks about it possibly being out of ordinance. And I suggest changing that to does not comply with the ordinance.
What's it did, by the way?
Yeah, it's up there. I never asked Chip on tolerance. I'm assuming it's 20th of August.
Looks it.
That's the same as the editing you sent me, right?
I, I didn't think I'd sent it to you.
This sent, you did send me some.
Oh, did I? Okay, so maybe I already did that. So I probably also said, there's a reference to minor subdivision. It should be major subdivision.
Is that the same paragraph? No?
No, that's, that's the Menetone.
Paul, surprise the process for this major subdivision application.
Okay, so I, I did send that to you. Okay, great. Any else, any other edits to 128?
There's just some.
Where is that?
Well, like scroll down, the last page or paragraph spread, like one that serves for Carter and Lempert. It was also one of Butter has concerns of that. There's just no period.
Okay, yeah.
There's a couple.
Check that.
Yeah, there's actually three paragraphs.
Oh, my, my bullet.
No.
Oh, okay.
Below the bullets.
Oh, yeah, I see it now. Okay, we're going to Lempert. Yeah. Well.
Just.
I would be anti grammar.
Yeah, just add periods.
No, that's good. I, I probably did too.
I'm sure you did.
I didn't do a whole lot of it, but just anti grammar that I had.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of January 28th, 2025, as amended.
Please, motion, second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
211. And that was in a 313 email.
Short, sweet response.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's your sets are all on the page each.
Any comments on 211? If not, I would take a motion.
Should, this is clearly trivial. I'm sorry, the second bullet, Bob stated the fire pod will hold. Do we mean 41,830? Is that what we're saying? So should we comment after the one?
Yeah.
Not a grammar edit.
Hope that we three minutes for 11, as amended.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so two, Dana and Henry abstentions. 218, that was an L U O workshop. I have no changes. Anyone have edits for 218? Same none? Is there a motion?
We accept the minutes of February 18th.
A second.
Also.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstention.
And finally, 311. That was also in the 313 email.
Period after there's still public.
Yeah. Any edits besides the periods? The motion.
We accept the minutes of March 11.
A second. Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor?
I approve state.
Aye.
So 40 abstentions on that. Did you get all those, Angelica?
Was it Henry stating that was the two, right? He's getting the three, I think.
Oh, was that right?
12 minutes, okay.
Oh, thank you. All right, thanks.
What's the next meeting, Paul?
The next meeting is the and that meeting would be the final application for Menetone.
Just to God's ears.
I was hoping you all would be willing to sign my nomination papers.
Or what?